Good afternoon, good afternoon and welcome to our public hearing here on the two guides to licensing assessments. This is part of a consultation, as you know, and we will introduce you to the main content of the two guides first here this afternoon and then, of course, we are at your disposal for questions. So Sofia Toscano Rico, head of the Authorization Division, and Eric Smith, Principal Supervisor in the very same division, will first talk about the general licensing guide. And afterwards, Giacomo Caviglia, head of the Supervisory Oversight Division, and Tamanata Locteya, Principal Supervisor in the very same division, will speak about the fintech guide, so to speak, so the licensing for fintech companies. Just to remind you, this hearing is webcast and is live on the web and you can watch it again afterwards on our website. So without further ado, Sofia.
Thank you both. Good afternoon everyone, welcome from my side for this public hearing on licensing assessments. To give you a bit of a background, I would start with a brief presentation, you have the handouts with you. And then the main purpose of today is really to collect your questions, try to clarify any issues that are not so clear for you. So we will give time for your questions after this presentation. The main purpose of the consultation from the ECB side is really to collect feedback and input. If we can still improve this guide, we will do it, so we will take into account all your comments. And the main purpose of the guide is to harmonize, to try to increase the harmonization on the implementation of the authorization assessment criteria across the nineteen SSM member states. And this with the main aim of achieving a common supervisory practice and increase also the transparency so that applicants know what is expected from our side when they submit an application for a license decision. The ECB, since November two thousand and fourteen, has the task to ensure that all entrants to the banking market are robust and comply with national and European criteria. And this applies both to significant institutions or less significant institutions. And the ECB does this in very close cooperation with the national competent authorities. In these two guides, what we are trying to do is to provide a general guidance on what the applicants for a banking license or for an extension of a license need to provide. And then in the fintech guide, we give some specific guidance, taking into account the specific business model of these types of banks. And that's why we have two guides and Giacomo will then guide you a bit through the fintech guide. If we move to the next slide, so slide four, what we have here is a bit of a background of the legal framework that is applicable to these procedures. You can see here the SSM regulation, which grants the competence to the ECB to decide on this type of procedures. The SSM framework regulation that goes a bit into more detail and elaborates on the specific roles of the ECB and the national competent authorities. The CRD four that gives us the legal European background regulation that is then transposed into each member state's national law. The ECB needs always to apply national law and we all know that the CRD four in this area is a minimum harmonization directive. So we do have some diversity in the way that member states transpose this area into their national law. So the ECB also needs to look at national law. We also have the EBA technical standards published recently that give us guidance on what is the information that needs to be submitted to the supervisors to start and to have a complete application form on these matters. And then the SSM policies, practices and processes come in and that's what we are trying to make more transparent through this guide. And we are trying to ensure that all member states follow the same interpretation of the regulation and apply the same assessment processes. Of course, each case is a case, any assessment is done on a case by case basis. So what we have here is just guidance on the assessment process and what is expected. If you move to the following slide, you have the main areas of attention that we focus in any application for a licensing decision. And I would give particularly emphasis to the program of operations, including the business model, the structure, organization and the capital and liquidity, just to let you know that more specific guidance will be given on these areas in terms of general licensing guidance. So another consultation process will come soon with more specific guidance on these areas. For today, I would focus on the two other criteria, the suitability of management and suitability of the shareholders. We will give you also some feedback on the process as well as on the background of what can be considered in the scope for the licensing procedures. Moving to slide six and going a bit into more detail on these areas. So the guide gives specific guidance on what is considered a credit institution and we do it by going into the different terms of the definition of a credit institution. And it's important to note that when we look at an application, we ensure that the application fulfills with all these components, not only from a theoretical perspective, but that indeed the bank will develop these activities. We also are giving now guidance on what are the situations where an ECB license is needed. And we have it whenever we have a new bank from scratch, but also in some member states where we don't have a universal banking license and that the license is given for specific activities. And whenever the bank wants to perform additional activities, it might require an extension of a license. So the licensing process is also triggered. And then we have the case of the changes of licenses, which is very specific and we only have it in some member states. But that applies when we have some changes in the legal structure or in the conditions of the license. Moving forward to slide seven and focusing on the management body members. Now we assess the fitness and propriety of the management bodies, both in their supervisory function and executive function. In this assessment, we mainly follow the criteria and the guidance that is in the ECB Fit and Proper Assessment Guide that is already published. We have a proportionate approach. For example, when we have a license extension where the board members were already assessed, we do not assess them again. We would only focus the assessment on the additional board members that come in, if any, at that stage. And also the particular case of the bridge banks. If the urgency to grant the license for a bridge bank so demands, we can also waive the assessment of the fit and proper at that stage and do it later. In what regards shareholders, we look at the reputation of the shareholders, their financial soundness and also the lack of anti-money laundering terrorism finance that could be in any way associated. On the reputation, of course, the assessment is not proportionate. We go into detail when we have any kind of issues. And we usually do not reassess the shareholders if they don't change in the case of an extension of license unless there are new facts that would trigger this reassessment. And I would move to the last slide of this part of the presentation where we focus a bit more on the process. So the guide gives also a bit of guidance on what is the process to be followed. One of the most relevant things for you is that the entry point continues to be the national competent authority. So any application, any formal application should be submitted to the national competent authority. But the ECB strongly encourages that before sending the formal application, there is an engagement in what we call a pre-application phase. So if there is an intention to create a new bank or to start a new line of activities, you should approach both the national regulators or ECB and explain us what is your project. This pre-application phase, it's important to set up also the expectations, to try to have an understanding on what could be the timeline, what will be the elements that are required to ensure that you submit a complete and well-granted application that then ensures also a faster assessment process. Because what we see, and we will talk about that on what is the expected time for a decision, what we see that impacts the most on the assessing time is indeed the completeness and the adequateness of the information that is provided from the applicants. The average assessment time for licensing would go from six to twelve months. So twelve months is usually the maximum time that the assessment could take. But of course, this can vary according to national law and we would need to follow the timeline that is provided in national law. And just very briefly, in the end, the decision could be either a positive, a negative or a decision with conditions or obligations. And we always ensure a due and fair process, giving also always feedback to the applicants on how the assessment process is ongoing. I would give the floor then to Giacomo to guide us through the fintech guide.
Thank you, Sofia. Fintech guide, let me start giving you some background on the rationale behind the decision by the ECB to prepare a specific fintech guide regarding the assessment of licensing applications. Now, they needed to have a common supervisory approach. For the assessment of these institutions comes from the recent observation of an increasing trend in applications from fintech banks. The underlying objective of this initiative is to promote innovation and efficiency in the banking industry, while at the same time contributing to the safety and soundness of the banking system in the context of a rapid technological change. So fintech institutions with their own risk profile need to be properly authorized as any other bank. And equally, they are requested to put in place basically risk control frameworks that can anticipate, understand and respond to the risk arising in their field of operations. The fintech guide fosters then a common approach for the assessment of these institutions, including also their own risk profile, from the start of the application process. With the publication of the fintech guide and the public consultation, of course, the ECB provides transparency of requirements to applicants and also, of course, increase also their understanding of the procedure and criteria applied during the process. So we can say therefore that the transparency is intended in this case also to facilitate, to the extent possible, the application process. Now moving to slide ten. What do we mean by fintech? For the purpose of this guide, the ECB has made use of a pragmatic definition of fintech, also based on a concept already elaborated by the Financial Stability Board. So fintech is indeed defined by the ECB as a business model in which the production and delivery of banking products and services are based on technological-enabled innovation. This broad concept is able to capture actually the different activities, the wide range of activities conducted by the credit institutions in the different countries of the euro area and also allows to, let's say, to capture both existing banks that evolve and integrate the technological innovation, but also fintech banks that are new market participants. Let me say that what is worth highlighting here, mentioning, is that the policies, including the fintech guide, are not exclusively applicable to fintech institutions and may equally be relevant to the assessment or considered to be relevant for the assessment of banks with more traditional business models. On slide eleven, let me say that the supervisory consideration included in the fintech guide should be read in conjunction and in accordance with ECB general licensing policies and methodology. So the guide on fintech does not change at all the general policy. On the contrary, it ends up complementing the general policy, providing further indications related to the specificities of these institutions to the supervisor authorities. And that's also the reason why the structure of the fintech guide reflects the same structure and the same supervisory area assessed as part of any new license application. Now going through the slide twelve, going through the specific areas of attention in the fintech licensing process, let me briefly mention in the area of governance the suitability of the members of the management body of fintech institutions. Given the specific nature of these institutions and the material technology support needed to support their activity, of course, the members of the body, of the management body of these institutions should have a quite deep knowledge and technical expertise and experience in technology. Of course, this is done, this is needed in order to understand the risks that are in the business model of these institutions. However, what I can say is that a common feature that we often observe in fintech applicants is that there is mostly focus on these technological aspects and less attention on the banking and financial knowledge. Therefore, there is a need during the licensing process to spend a lot of attention by the supervisor authorities also about the fact that the banking and financial experience is reflected in the composition of the management body of these institutions. Now turning to the slides, in the next slides, to the area of structural organization, let me highlight the importance of having in place a proper credit risk approval and governance. Indeed, this is a quite important aspect. In the initial phase of the business of these institutions, fintech banks, there is a tendency of these institutions to use outsourced credit scoring services and/or rely on alternative sources of data or sometimes making use also of alternative credit scoring methods. And this is related to the fact that particularly in the initial phase of their activity, these institutions are not able to collect all the information related to the capability, to the repayment capability of their customers. Therefore, also in this case, there is a need from the supervisor authority to spend a lot of attention on specific aspects, for instance, on the minimum data requirements, on the feasibility of in-house credit scoring models or the presence of commensurate risk management and capital safeguards in case there is a use of alternative data and credit scoring methods by the fintech institutions. Still in the context of the structural organization, the assessment of the information technology-related risk is of course extremely important. And the ECB, as you know, has always spent particular attention to the cyber risk. But in this case, we also refer to other related risks like outsourcing or cloud outsourcing. Also in this case, there is a need from the supervisor authority to spend attention on aspects like for instance, the possibility to have access or contractual rights to audit or supervise, for instance, outsourced activities. Now, moving to the last slide concerning the fintech guide, let me briefly touch upon the supervisory considerations in the area of the program of operations, sometimes referred to as a business plan. By saying that compared with traditional banks, the business projections and the resulting capital requirements of fintech institutions tend to have a greater level of uncertainty. And this relates to the fact that there is the application by this bank of a new technology. And actually, the implementation of the same business plan is surrounded by general uncertainty. So in this context, the ECB and the national competent authorities will assess whether the applicants can demonstrate that they are able to hold and reserve sufficient capital to cover startup losses in the first three years of activities. In this context, there is also a possibility visited by the fintech guide. The national competent authority can ask the fintech to prepare an exit plan, identifying how to win the voluntary, the business and close down the bank without imposing additional losses to depositors. So I think that I can finish, conclude here with the overview of the fintech guide. I turn back to my colleague Sofia for the timeline of the current process.
Thank you, Giacomo. So in the slide fifteen, you have a brief description of the consultation process. Today, we are having the public hearing and as you know, comments can be sent and submitted still until the second of November, when the public consultation will end. And we expect to be able to publish the final guide close to the end of the year by the twentieth of December. You have in your documents the link to the information on the consultation process. So if you need more information, please feel free to go there. And we are looking forward to receiving your written comments because we take them, of course, into account when drafting the final guides. And this is it. We will open now for questions.
Thanks, Sofia. So we are now at your disposal for questions. So if you have any, please raise your hands. We have microphones in the room so that you can speak to everybody.
Thank you. Just one question perhaps at the beginning. You said as well, the pre-application phase, you expect the applicant to talk to the NCA and to the ECB. In my experience, the NCA is more the first entry point and the touch point. So how to interpret this? Should we kind of, should an applicant get contact to you as well directly or what do you expect?
In all processes and our experience shows that we work very closely together with the national competent authorities. So it's on your discretion to approach either institution because in the end, we will work together anyway. What we usually do is even if in the first exploratory meeting, the ECB is not present or the NCA, we will ensure that all information is shared. And we will also ensure that if needed, both entities are in those meetings and will, of course, already look into any documentation that comes in this pre-application phase. So cooperation is one of our key principles and we ensure that it runs smoothly.
As a follow-up then, so within the application process, in my experience, this was partly so that more the NCA was driving the whole process. And then with the draft proposal, ECB come into play a bit afterwards for the final decision-making. So how is it in future? Do you want to be more involved right from the beginning to make it even more smoother?
To make it a bit more clear, whenever there is a formal application that is submitted to the NCA, they are always the entry point, the ECB is also informed that there is an application submitted. At that moment in time, there is an exchange, usually with the NCAs. And then, of course, it depends also on the specific case. If the ECB feels the need to immediately start assessing at the same time and discussing already with the NCAs, or we could consider that the NCAs could start the assessment process and we would then ensure that there is some alignment before. As you know, in the licensing cases, which is quite exceptional in the SSM context, if the NCA considers that the EU or national requirements are not met, they can reject the application by themselves. So they don't need to submit a proposal to the ECB to reject. They can immediately reject. So if from the first assessment that is conducted, it is clear for the NCA that the requirements are not and will not be met, they can take that decision immediately. Our experience up to now is that the interaction is very, very good with all the NCAs and the assessment process goes very smoothly. We have regular interactions with all NCAs on the processes that are ongoing. So if you have contacts with the NCAs, you should continue those contacts and internally, we will align when the ECB needs to be involved and how. The other way around would also work. If we are contacted, we will ensure that the NCA is always informed and involved. But in these cases, as they are the entry point, it would make sense that the first approach is the NCA.
Thank you. This is Davi Sanchev from Banco Santander. First of all, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the guides and thank you for making it in a public procedure where we can give you our comments. And I only have one question about if a already regulated bank by a vintage company, let's say fifty-one percent of a vintage company, to develop kind of activity that the bank already have a license, that point triggered the need of applying for a new application process for that? I mean, it's an activity that we already do, but now we buy a new company to develop a little bit this business activity. So the need for, there is a trigger for a new application process for that?
Maybe I can start and then Giacomo, if you want to complement. If this entity is not a bank, so if the fintech company is not a bank and will develop banking activities, that encompasses the definition of a credit institution, then yes, this entity would need a new banking license, even if it's a subsidiary, if it would become a subsidiary of a bank that already has, of course, the banking license to pursue those activities. So if it's a new entity, an entity that does not have a banking license and they will start developing new activities that are considered banking activities, then they would require a new banking license. I don't know, Giacomo. Or Eric, if you want to complement?
No, that's correct.
No, I mean, just to complement what Sofia said, I mean, there are different business models applied in the context of fintech. So of course, there might be situations where there are already, there are banks already in place. There are fully fledged virtual banks. So there are several situations. I mean, the one... I mean, the the one that you mentioned doesn't trigger, of course, any any licensing procedures unless you are going, as Sophia just said, to buy a a different subsidiary or entity which is defined as a bank. So then, in this case, of course, this trigger qualifying all the procedure.
It would mean that it doesn't make any difference, the the fact that it's a bank or is any other player who buy this vintage company. So the process will be exactly the same. I mean, the this new entry will have to apply the whole process, application process. So it doesn't mean, it doesn't make any difference that the the parent company is a bank who already have that license for that activity.
Yes, if it's a different entity, so the licensing is per entity. If if it's a new entity that will start, because if it was already a fintech company, maybe what they do is not what the banking activity. So they do not grant, receive deposits or the repayable funds and they don't grant credit on their own account. But if they start doing these activities, so if they start conducting banking activities, they would require a banking license. When you say, is the process the same? The process might not be the same if if the acquirer is a bank or not because, as I was mentioning, if if the shareholder is is already a shareholder that is known to the to the supervisors, the assessment is probably faster and easier because we would already have all the information on our side. But the licensing, triggering a licensing process, yes, it would trigger, even if it's a bank buying one of these entities that will become a bank.
Any other questions in the room?
Thank you. My name is Jochen Kindermann from Simmons and Simmons. When we read the definition for fintech banks, we struggled a bit with the with with the comment that just relates to the question on technology-enabled innovation. I mean, currently, any kind of bank with which we work, in a certain way, develop structures, acquire structures, which are very close and I would call and qualify as technology, technology-developing. So in a nutshell, for us, this guide meant in a certain way that any kind of bank application also has to cover the particularities of this new guideline. Is that also your understanding? Or why do you draw the line between, so to say, normal bank and fintech bank?
Oh, thank you for this question. Again, let me say that there is no intention whatsoever to to introduce new requirements with the Fintech Guide. So there is only one general policy concerning the licensing and the assessment of the licensing application. That said, what the Fintech Guide just complement the general policy. So indeed, if there are banks that have specialized entities or units in their own context of framework and they, or potential banks that are going to apply to receive a license in the context of the assessment of the of the license for these banks, some of the aspects that I just described before will be applied during the assessment by the supervisor authorities. So this is, I mean, what we want to to do with this Fintech Guide is to, let's say, to identify this special area of interest from a supervisory perspective, deserve particular attention when there is a a high level of technology, let's say, expressing the structure of the bank. So in this case, of course, there is a need to spend attention to specific aspects. But otherwise, the 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 process is exactly the same, the assessment is exactly the same. Sophia, I don't know if you want to complement, but this is a bit of the concept of the Fintech Guide.
Can you then comment? Can you then probably also comment on the question, what happens if a bank, like I would say, currently very common acquires, in this case, a tech firm? Then you would probably come to the conclusion this now changes to a fintech bank and that is kind of jump over the threshold. Does this mean, is this an expansion, extension of the licensing? So does this mean I have to go through an additional process? Or is this already included? So what what's the process under these circumstances?
No, thank you for the question. This certainly doesn't trigger a new license procedure per se unless unless the bank was not supposed to have a fully-fledged license at the beginning. And this, in this case, I mean, if there is an extension of of activities and this activity was not originally foreseen in the in the banking license provided by the by the supervisor authorities, then there is a need to have an additional request for a licensing procedure, an extension of license. We have to rely a lot on also on the national framework. In some jurisdictions, there is no possibility to have, there is no possibility to have, let's say, license that refer only to part of the activities. There are only fully-fledged licenses provided to to banks. In other jurisdictions, on the contrary, there is a possibility to have limited license in terms of activities. And if we are referring to these jurisdictions indeed and we're referring to the case that you mentioned before, then indeed, this would trigger the need to have, to request an extension of the activity with a new process for the licensing assessment. In this case, the Fintech Fintech Guide would apply, at least the the aspects related to the Fintech Guide that would would be considered by the supervisor authorities during the the process.
Thank you. Are there any further questions in the room? It seems as if the presentation was so complete that only very few questions. That's great. Yeah, thank you very much then. Thanks for coming. And we're looking forward to receiving your comments and writing, if you if you have any. If you if you have already sent some some questions and comments and requests for clarifications in. And yeah, looking forward to this and thank you very much again for coming.